All right, we have a continuance of the tax classification public hearing scheduled for 4:30 as there are motion to open the public hearing for tax classification.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open for the tax class. So last meeting we had Ms. Kosker, the assessor, and she did some breakdowns of where the tax bills would be. I believe, Ms. Kosker, you said the assessor's recommendation was to go back to 125 on the shift? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you just have a point of personal privilege. Kelly, sorry I wasn't here for the last meeting. I was, unfortunately, I was at a memorial service for a family friend, mother of two, 42 years old, two children. So, sorry, but I did watch the meeting on YouTube and I'm up to speed on everything that you presented and, you know, I was really impressed with the presentation that you made.
Well, I appreciate that, David.
So I just wanted to make sure you knew that, me coming into this, that, not my own work.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So the recommendation by the assessors is to move back down to 125. I guess I just don't understand that theory because last year, there was a big expression to go to 150. And I kind of halted that whole thing, saying that's extremely dangerous to go to 150. So now it's, you know, we're going back to pendulum, wants to swing the other way. So with that said, you know, I'm looking at your numbers and I'm looking at them. It says estimated, you base the tax rates on estimated maximum allowable levy, which is 22,126,935. So with that said, I look at the recap sheet that was presented to me by the town accountant, and we still have $120,000 in excess levy capacity. And it appears that the assessors are taking that excess levy capacity off and is included that in the maximum levy in your projections for the tax.
The projections are always based on the maximum levy. They have been historically.
Okay.
Because that's not a moving number. That's where the town knows its cap is. So that's what the numbers, kind of the worst scenario, if you will.
Okay, very good. So my recommendation and town accountant's recommendation, I believe it's the town administrator's recommendation, is to leave the 120 in excess levy capacity.
That's the judgment of the board of selectmen.
Correct. So I would say that if we, you have to recalculate and using a levy of 22,6935 minus that 120.
Okay.
And then, there's also been a recommendation from the town accountant's office and the town administrator's office in the overlay line item 10, fiscally, your overlay allowance for abatements and exemptions, and you're putting in $250,000 when is in excess of $1 million already in that account. And on an annualized basis, I believe, in abatements, we do roughly $90,000 in abatements a year.
We do have a pending liability with utility companies. It's a class action suit that could be about $300,000.
That's correct. But if we, so when we looked at the number in the overlay, it's 1.7 million dollars. You back off 400,000 for that, you're at 1.3. And then we have uncollected taxes of roughly 400,000. So that leaves us roughly $900,000 already there. Then you add another 250, we're back to 1.15 million dollars. It's a lot of money sitting in the pot for abatements when our average funds run rate is $90,000 a year. So again, there's a recommendation to not put 250,000 dollars.
You realize, Kevin, with that money being there, that basically, the town has been fortunate enough and, I mean, not to toot my own horn, but the assessors have kept the liability down of the overlay where we don't have ATV or a lot of challenge by abatements. That's why it's there. Just so you're aware of that. And in regards to the excess levy capacity, that is the determination of the board of selectmen. But in, for budgetary purposes, you realize over, if you're looking to leave $120,000 for FY '24, over the past four fiscal years, this is just a number, over $700,000 of excess levy capacity was not subject to taxation or collected by the town. I don't know whether that number can be made up in other ways. I'm not really sure.
So there was one fiscal year, if you're talking about the one dramatic fiscal year, because we've never carried a lot of money in excess levy capacity. There was one fiscal year, I think it was fiscal year '21, maybe it was '22 because of the way the calendar years go. I think that number was $394,000. And that's because we seen exorbitant new growth in that year of $734,000.
That is correct.
Which is an extraordinary difference from what we normally do. And that was the whole reason of putting that in excess levy capacity and not spending like drunken sailors that year. That's why board of selectmen did that move, is to not allow that because you don't see that kind of new growth, right? So once you spend it, it's going to be made up every year. You don't have it to make up every year, you'd have a shortfall. So that's through prudent budgetary, right? This is what we did, the town's done. Again, leaving the 112 on the shelf. I can say this, according to DLS, out of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, every single one of them have money in excess levy capacity.
They certainly do, but historically, a cushionet did not leave a lot. I mean, this only really started in FY '21. And again, not in the discretion of the assessors. It is the board of selectmen that make the ultimate decision and sign off on that. I'm just presenting numbers and facts.
I understand.
So in regards to when we say there sometimes is a gap or a shortfall in budget, sometimes that should be considered as the projection as well. You don't know what the next year is coming and overlay surplus is a potential way to come, to fill that gap.
Mm-hmm, I know. I totally get all of that. I'm just conscientious of the tax rate in the people that are paying taxes in the town. You know, I don't know. I look at what I pay for taxes and what I get for services, right? No disrespect to anybody, but I basically get garbage picked up for like 3,700 bucks a year. That's what I get for services. So, and I'm looking at a projection of, you know, whatever is going to go up again this year, a couple hundred bucks.
Possibility, depending on what shift.
Depends on where you are in value, right?
Well, at the bottom of the sheet, you can see that residential value did go up. I mean, obviously, it's reflective of the market, but commercial and industrial did as well. But we don't have growth in those areas. We really, the biggest growth factors have been in solar, with the solar revenues and through personal property, not necessarily real property.
I know. I get all the logistics of it all. I'm just trying to balance everything out in the best interest of the taxpayers of a cushionet. I think that's our goal and that's our job, really. To tax to the max, I think is a dangerous precedence. And I know that it's been done in previous years, but, you know, looking at every other city and town in the Commonwealth, some don't have a lot in excess levy capacity and some other communities have millions in excess levy capacity. So all we're trying to do is be prudent.
In being prudent, I just would, I just want to state that, you know, moving forward, I'm really not intimate, I don't intimately know what's going on with the finances in regards to what we're looking at for FY '25, but I don't think the town would like to look at an override or a debt exclusion for budgetary purposes. So that's something to consider as well, and I'm sure you did. But that's my thought. I think, honestly, my opinion is if it's collected in increments, it's a little less of a blow to the taxpayer and the town can be more fiscally responsible and moving forward with its budget. Again, you have your perspective as board collectively to look at it. The assessors and my job and what I'm statutorily supposed to do has nothing to do with the excess levy capacity. That is your determination. I am giving an opinion from what it looks like from my side of the table.
I totally get that. I totally get that. I'm just, it's important for the board because we're looking at something and we're going to agree to something. And I think it's important for the board to understand where the levy should be at based on what we're doing down at the bottom of the page. And that reflects the tax rate that was set for us to make a determination on tax shift, right, based on that maximum allowable levy.
Correct, and I always do, because it's a moving number. I would never know.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I can't, what happens is when I come in for classification, I don't really know what the first page of the recap is going to reflect because the accounting numbers aren't there. So I base it on a number that I know. And that's why, I think most communities do as well.
That's why the last meeting, I wanted to continue is because I like to look at the recap sheet and see the moving parts and what finance is doing with finances and how they're capturing that revenue. And I have that now, so.
I can tell you taxation is more than 50% of the $41 billion, million dollar budget that the town is looking at for FY '24. Other revenue sources, I think, are a little less at 19.
So if you, when we did the LA 5 and if we move that 250 in overlay, if you, I guess it was agreed upon previously to put that 200, then move to 250.
That's growth, not overlay.
I mean, no, the overlay.
Overlay is a moving number. That can be input manually just to do the recap adjustment. And it basically is just to make sure that the town can cover whatever its liability is moving forward.
I get that, but there's an abundance of money there. If our run rate's only $90,000 a year, you're 10x that number. You're more than that, but because of the other liabilities that are resting on the books, I get that. You have to make sure that, the town has to make sure that we're going to cover those liabilities if they come to fruition, right?
Absolutely.
So we've already accounted for that and we're still 10x that number on an annualized basis.
Thank you. That means I'm doing my job. I appreciate that.
So when we changed the number on the LA 5 on the 250, the overlay, if you change it from 200 to 250, it automatically took off like $56,000 in overlay, I mean, excess levy capacity.
It's just moving around the number. Exactly correct.
So I think the recommendation from the town administrator and town accountant is to do 200 for overlay this year. Is that correct?
Realize overlay is a jurisdiction of the board of assessors. I cannot answer for them. And they're the ones that sign off on that page. It is not me. Because I give them the numbers if they agree. I will definitely present it, but I can't answer for the board.
Okay, fair enough. So there's your answer on that. So I guess we're going to have to know what the...
And furthermore, if we continue classification again, just so you know, the town, right now, this year, is about two weeks off of its schedule to put out the tax bills tightly. And we have a few other moving parts this year where the billing is going to be done a little bit differently and we have new software. So if things don't go perfectly, there's a possibility, the bills can't get out by December 31st. I don't foresee the board of assessors challenging what you want to put there. I really don't. But I think for future years, the board of selectmen may want to meet with the assessors beforehand, especially if they're trying to do this allocation and try to get the levy to lesser than the maximum because it is definitely an involved part of the whole process.
Yeah, I know. So if the assessors, if the assessors were to stay at the 250, it's going to arbitrarily lower what excess levy capacity is.
Correct.
By $56,338, to be exact.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, then it's only leaving 76 in excess levy capacity, right? Somewhere around that number.
Right.
So, and there's a couple of ways to skin the cat. The board of selectmen can then say, well, then we want to leave $175,000 in excess levy capacity if the board of assessors leave 250 in overlay.
I'm just, the selectmen, when it comes to overlay, they don't have jurisdiction statutorily.
No, I understand.
And I'm not trying to be difficult with you. I'm just saying, I can't answer on their behalf.
All I'm trying to do is bring up a point because it was, when I came in yesterday and spoke with finance, it was said to me that, in the town administrator, was said to me that they agreed, that the agreement was $200,000 and for some reason it was changed to 250. So that's my point. And that's mine.
No, they had that discussion with me, so I don't know.
Okay. Just basically going off what I was told.
That number can, it's a manual input. Anything can be put in there, recalc it, and then the money gets shifted to the excess levy. That's arbitrary. What I'm trying to say is if, the check and balance, I think, is lacking a little bit with that in respect to the board of assessors have jurisdiction over that account, not the board of selectmen. And if you're doing it to lower the tax rate, I understand your rationale, but you have to look at it, I think, more openly in regards to, don't you want to have that cushion? Just in case there is something that comes up that's catastrophic, that it can't cover the liability? You don't know if you don't collect the taxes, if tax title isn't done, if there's defaults. There's a lot of moving parts. I understand where you're coming from, but...
Yeah, we know there's roughly $400,000 in uncollected taxes. So that's part of that overlay, that's that 1.7, right? Then the 300 and something, that's for the utilities. That's why we backed that number out and you left with, call it 850. So I think a million dollars, that's one hell of a buffalo. It's 10x what you normally do in a fiscal year, Kelly. So that's all, I'm just trying to make that point, is I think there's a lot of money in overlay. And this is the year where I think that we do need that $50,000 because I believe we had that conversation in the last meeting where last year we budgeted 250 for new growth and we're at 202 with that change in number. So that's given us back that $50,000 bucks.
It is.
That's the, I think that's the rationale from not putting 250 and putting 200 this year. That's the rationale that I was being presented, is the rationale behind that. So I think we're just trying to balance numbers here and be counting to the taxpayers of a cushionet, right? Tax to the max, it's a bad philosophy. I know some people like it. The more money we have, the more money they can spend, but, you know, we're getting into some dire straits with finances. And I think that this, you know, the board and the finance committee and the finance department got some work to do this year when it comes to budgetary, for budgetary purposes, along with the school department, right? We got a lot of moving targets. So it's going to be, it's going to be a tough job, I believe, this year, anyway. So with that said, I'm inclined to leave the tax rate shift right at 135 where we were last year, to be honest. I think it's more proportionate to what we're looking to do. Presidential taxes will go up. When you did your...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When you did, when you did your presentation, the only thing that I'm concerned is when you did your presentation last week and everybody's seen it on TV, up on the screen, is used in the comparison of average values on one of your screenshots, it says for commercial 12% year over year from '23 to '24. But on a previous page that was also shown, and I read this out to myself yesterday, it says the change in value per class comparing fiscal year '23 to '24 is an 8% increase in the residential class and an average of 7% for commercial class, 10% for industrial class, 5% for personal property.
When I say commercial on those screens, it's basically taking commercial and industrial together. So if you add the two together, it's a 17%. So that's why you're seeing 12 for the average, just so you know.
Okay. I don't know if you gentlemen have anything to say, but, you know.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I've got sort of a 30,000-foot view of this whole, of where we are. I think we're really at a reflection point on how we handle our town finances. I think we've done a very, very good job of not spending beyond our means. But by the same token, I've heard time and time again, not only from our employees and others in the community, that we've got to start paying our employees what they deserve in order to, I mean, to keep them, but also to attract talent. And I want to make sure that we're looking at everything to that so that we can carry out that mission. While I know you, I understand what you're saying about, you know, garbage collection is the only service that you feel like you get. I think we do above and beyond that. You know, we've got outstanding public service, fire, police, EMS. We've got a great park department. I think we got a good bank for our buck in town for the taxes that we collect. And the making sure that we've got a team in place to carry out the day-to-day, I think, is really important. And it's something that I want to make sure we're leaning into. I think, you know, you raise solar. I think the way we approach solar has been smart, but maybe that's outlived its usefulness because, you know, there are things like pilots that we could consider. We've got a number of solar arrays onboard which would guarantee us a tax payment over time that we can count on, that's not a depreciating asset. So I just think that we've got to start looking at things a little differently than we have over the years. Doesn't mean we have to act on them, but I do think we've got to look at things from a different lens versus just doing the same playbook year after year. Because at some point, the balloon's going to pop. We just got to take out a little bit of air right now to get us through what we're going through. So that's just my, my overall. But I agree with you, today at 135, I'm supporting that. But just my, that's my overall view of how we're looking at town government and our expenditure.
I think there's no question. You know, I wasn't trying to degrade any of the services that we do provide to our taxpayers. I'm saying from my perspective what I get, right? And hopefully, you know, I hope I never have to use public safety, fire, EMS, right? Those are the things that we always hope that we don't have to use. And we have a great fire EMS department and we have a great public safety division. So no disrespect to any of those comments that I made, so I hope that doesn't...
Yeah, that's not where I was going there.
If I was trying to go there. I've been doing this for a long time for the town of a cushionet. I've supported all of those departments and then some. I support everybody that works for the town of a cushionet. You know, I think it's a much broader discussion when it comes to paying salaries to their employees and, you know, what those, what those numbers are going to be. I think we've always looked at contract negotiations and we've always been fair in contract negotiations. And clearly, we have to be, right? If both sides agree to it, that's got to be fair, right? I think that's what we've always done. And, you know, unfortunately, the employment climate has changed, the dynamics of that has changed dramatically and we have to be conscientious of that, but we also have to be conscientious to live within our means, right? I tell people all the time, town of a cushionet, we can't make up for the federal government's inflationary problems, right? I wish I could. And just say, okay, inflation's running at 10%. Everybody gets a 10% raise and we're killing inflation because of the federal government's ignorant and it costs everything to cost more. All of our products that cost more money, right? It just doesn't work that way because we could solve the problem for municipal employees, but I would everybody else in the private sector that's not getting those 10% raises, right? So it's always a balance of what we can and can't do and we try to work within the fiscal constraints that we have. And we have those fiscal constraints, so I just don't want to hurt. Obviously, if we have $400,000 of uncollected taxes, people are hurting, right? I don't want to cause any more pain. Everybody, and I think everybody out there understands that your taxes are going up every year regardless of whatever we try to do, right? You spend more money every year, that's the problem. Spending $1.2 million every year, compound on the annualized basis, 10 years, you have $12 million more dollars at your fiscal budget, right? It's damaging. It's, you know, put in perspective, you have $36 million right now, which we're roughly at for a budget, right? You put that in perspective, you just do the calculation I just gave, it's basically another third. So whatever you're paying in taxes today, you add another third to that and, you know, that's where you're going to be down the road in 10 years. So, you know, it's like everything else. When you go to the grocery store, you don't want to be paying $5 for milk when you paid $3 for milk, right? But you're doing it. It's a tough pill to swallow, what the country's going through right now with inflation, but we can't solve those problems for everybody. That's the moral of that story. So I'm all right, I just, you know, it worries me a little bit with, you know, the assessors keeping 250 and us making a decision on what we're going to set maximum allowable levy at, leaving the 120 on the table and they keep the 250 on the table, we're only leaving 76 on the table. 70 on the table, whatever it may be, minus that 55 number that I gave. So that's a concern, you know. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, I've got a number of financial concerns. New growth is disappearing. So I think it's, the smartest thing is to make sure that the board doesn't go beyond the traditional and leave an excess levy capacity of at least 100 to 150,000 in the bank because that is your safety net if new growth goes as bad as I think it might next year.
We, that's the other problem, right? And that's kind of what you talked about, Kelly, with the overlay, and that's kind of what the board's job is with excess levy capacity, right? Is trying to figure out that balance for that bad scenario coming, right? And if you look at projections right now for new growth, we also ran that number a little bit from where we are year to date. And that number's not good for new growth, right? And I can tell you right now, from what we have in the first five months of the calendar year, minus one big project on a permit fee that was in $40,000, I think it was, that takes away one-third of where we're at for new growth that you're not going to recapture the following year. So, I mean, there's a lot of, as the economy slows, we don't know if it's going to get worse, it's going to stay stagnant. Right now, we're not on a good trajectory for new growth. So in some of the line items that we're using the budget for revenues, you're at 76% on the other departmental rental licenses and permits, I'm sorry. We're up to 76% using that number for license and permits. And we know that number's going to drop, right? And we've added more money in revenue this year to help cover some budget shortfall. So you're getting to that threshold where you really want to stop using that number and upping that number, right? Because that number's a moving target, licenses and permits. It's dangerous. And there's only so much of that number that you should be allowed to use because, again, you expend it this year. If you use it all this year, next year you come in with half that amount, that's a shortfall and that's, that's a big nut, 100 grand. So it's, you know, we're not alone in this. A lot of municipalities are going through this struggle, right? So it's just, I think it's a good conversation to have. I would just ask that the, I think, you know, from the board's perspective, I don't know if they feel the same way, to ask the assessors to go with the 200 so that we can leave the 120 in excess levy capacity. I'd hate to see them prematurely raise excess levy capacity to offset if the assessors are going to leave the 250 there. So with that being said, we don't have control over the overlay. I would have the maximum allowable levy set at $22,6935, not to 22,126,935. Let me see what the, what the assessors do. If they change it on the LA 5 to 250 to 200, if they leave it alone, then it's moving our excess levy capacity. It's that simple.
And the split for the board?
135 is my take.
I'll stay with that.
So, can I, we have a motion?
Is there a motion to set the tax shift at 135?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Chairman, I just want to, again, Kelly, thank you for your work.
I appreciate that.
You've done a lot of hard work on this stuff and I can just say, I enjoy our conversations in the morning. I learn a lot every time I'm in your office. I appreciate the work that you and Nicole do over there.
I will let you know, Kevin, I will have a discussion with my board. Actually, you'll see it on the recap. And I don't foresee an issue, but I cannot answer for the board.
I understand that, Kelly. And I'd like to reiterate, Mr. Ordor's comments. Thank you for your work and services to the town of a cushionet.
I appreciate that.
And I'll say the same as well.
You know, Kelly, how I feel about you.
I'm not ready to retire yet.
You've, you know, we always, we always have our indifference, right? But in the end, you know, it's nice to always know that we're always friends and we can get along and we try to work our way through and navigate what we need to for the town of a cushionet residents. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
On behalf of the town of a cushionet residents, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just so the board knows, on December 4th, the state is starting their revenue hearings. The tax collection for the state is down 2.9%. So we're not sure what local aid will be.
More good news.
Yep.
Well, the good thing is, next year's an election year, so that means probably state aid will stay the same. Local aid will stay the same, if not, maybe even increase.
Well, that's the other big thing, right? Last year, they raised state aid. Chapter 70 was raised by $700,000, where that normalized rate of increase for chapter 70 is roughly $80,000 a year. Is that correct, Mr. Monticello?
Yep.
So state aid never go, that's again, another 10x number that we got, that we used in budgetary reasons, and we talked about that last year.
And we don't expect that to happen. And we don't expect that to happen.
Of course not, of course not. They can't continue any helicopter money, right? So, all right, so we're going to, is there a motion to close the tax classification public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. So the first order of new business was an Eagle Scout Troop 11 citation. That individual cannot make it tonight, so we will do that hopefully on December 5th, if we decide it's our next meeting. Second item, I asked Mr. Monticello to come in. It sounds website ADA compliance. There's some things here and here that I guess need to be done so that the town doesn't get slapped. Mr. Monticello, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so I know that Tanya and I believe Sydney were both on the meeting with Civic Plus and basically, in order to get the website ADA compliant for handicap purposes, it's going to be about $4,000. It wasn't originally budgeted, that's why I just wanted to at least bring it to your attention about this. It will be an annual cost. This will trigger for services from Civic Plus now over $10,000, so starting next year, I can go for three bids at least, just to see what other websites are costing. But for this year, at least, it would, you know.
And we can do it within the budget.
Yeah, we can, we can for this year, it was just, I wanted to bring it.
So it's like a, I think it was like a $4,300, it's called $4,500 increase.
Yeah.
But it's something that, we don't have a choice really to do, right?
Yeah, we have to do it.
We have to do it.
Yeah.
To bring the website into compliance. So, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Monticello.
Mr. Chairman, I have a meeting with the school superintendent tomorrow at 3 o'clock and that'll be one of the issues we bring up to make sure the school's compliant too because it would be the town as a whole that would be held in non-compliance.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion, second?
I feel like my life is flashing before my eyes. 1998, when I first got elected, we had Leanne Pereira work on the town's first ever website and people were like, what are we doing? What's this website?
Who needs a website?
There you go.
I guess it's the old, you've become a line wife.
The digital world's a dangerous world. Citizens' interest, we have a gentleman, Adam Nowicki, for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. He's into serving on that bike committee and he's into data collection and attention to safe practices and employment as an aircraft mechanic. Pretty interesting individual here. Is there a motion to appoint Adam Nowicki to the bicycle committee?
So moved. Second.
Bicycle and pedestrian safety committee, I should say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we know how many we have on that one now?
Uh, two vacancies.
There's two vacancies?
Only two vacancies, yeah, and actually, it's good.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just a personal thank you to Adam. We've talked a couple of times on Facebook about committees and what's available and I will reiterate every single time, anybody that wants to get involved, just send a letter of interest to us and we'll review your application and get you involved in town, town government, even if it's a committee that is small. It's a great place to start.
Sure is. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. All right, snow removal for the library.
It snowed today.
It snowed a little bit today, so I've had a conversation with Mr. Kelly on this and I've had some conversations with some of the library board of trustees. Their concern is not having a snow removal plan for opening up the library, so Mr. Kelly and I are working on that. I've had some discussions with GPW on snow removal. I talked to Dave, the maintenance guy. Unfortunately, he doesn't yet know how to operate the truck that we have for the town grounds with a plow. I told him that I would teach him once we get some snow.
And the, we've made sure that the snow blowers are in shape and ready to go.
Working with Dave on that as well, to make sure that's all happening. So I guess we're just, you know, right now, I think where we're at is just trying to get a plan to the library folks so that they're not being left in limbo the morning we get a snowstorm, right? So we'll try to figure something out with that. Depends on, it's, it's, snow's tricky, snowstorms are tricky. I've been through this for a long time and, you know, when you're plowing and it depends on how the snow's coming down. Obviously, if the snow's coming down like a banshee or in the middle of a blizzard, we're not opening until late opening. Depends on how much we get, we might not even open, right? But we need to be able to give them a better idea. So I think, you know, working with this schedule, their hours of operation, the days of their operation, I think we need to get that over to Mr. Manon so he can understand what times that they do have to open versus what potty ways in town hall opens the days.
And the fact that they've got a Saturday opening.
Yeah.
That they have a Saturday opening, whatever, whatever we need to do. But I think first things first is get scheduled the hours of operation for the library into Dan's hands so he understands what's going on and we got to get these buildings opened up. So we'll figure something out, hopefully in a year term for them.
I thought we went over this last year.
We did.
Right? So what's new, what's changed? The plan that we had last year didn't work or?
Well, we only had snow once, so.
And it's a question of availability of trucks and how we're going to schedule what where.
So, so one of the concepts we talked about, I mean, snow removal, snow removal, probably local contractors and, you know, maybe we just partner them up with the library and they can do that, you know, and the library could just call that contractor, right? Do it that way, I mean, there's, above and beyond the ones that are doing it for the town already, but I know, like, you know, there's a couple of guys, guy that I use every once in a while.
One, one of the issues that we have to address in the next meeting or the meeting after that is the snowplow drivers with the independents, not our own employees with the DPW. The chair and I have had discussions on that recently and we're hoping for an increase of volun, of contractors.
So right now, I've had that dialogue with the DPW staff and we've gotten five new contractors from the list from last year. The problem is, we've only got seven from that old list, a list of 18 or 19, whatever we have from last year, that have committed. I talked to Dan this morning to find out what's going on and seeing what we're getting to remade the contractors onboard. He said, right, you know, usually they're, I guess, commercial plates renew every January, so they're in the process of doing that and getting their registrations renewed so that they can present, give that information all over to DPW and staff so that they're approved for being on the contractors list. Hopefully, we'll get them all back and, you know, the reality of it is, is we have, and I talked to Dan, so I do have one question, Mr. Kelly, for you, is?
Your headlights.
My headlights on?
Give me the flicker.
What's that? Give me a flicker. Um, just give me a second, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nixon Jack of all trades.
Just going to hit the button, but I thought, when I came in, I forgot to say something. When I came in, I seen, I thought you were inside the car talking to them because my take, like, I don't know, a minute to shut off, you know? So, the other problem lies is, that's great that we got five new plow drivers from that old list, right? Because we did the $1,000 cash sign-on bonus. Problem is, we're down like three guys in DPW staff. So then lies the next problem is, the question was asked is, can we hire someone, just a driver, and have them operate our vehicle? So that's a question for you, I guess.
Oh, we can, if it's an employee, yes, but I will talk to the insurance company to make sure. We've talked to the, our new insurance company, the, for PNC, and made sure all of the drivers that are coming off the contractor list are going to be covered under the town insurance and the workers comp so we can contract with them. That's all taken place. I'll call the insurer tomorrow on that concept.
So I know the snowplow subcontractors require they have their own insurance, right? And most, most people with those vehicles, they already have the limits, right? And we have those limits set.
Or, or they can come through a rider on ours and pay a fee.
It's, it's chump change to have the right coverage. I've already back-checked that with, with my girl that has an insurance agency, so it's chump change for the, for the liability that we require to have. It's, it's peanuts.
So we just make sure that everybody's covered.
We do something with the workman's comp, DPW has that all figured out, so. You know, it's just, I think it's just from a peace of mind perspective for the library folks and, and, you know, I said it to one of the trustees, I said, you know what? I said, if, if we can't figure it out, then I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have somebody, you just, like you said, you have somebody if it's a bad storm.
They don't want to do the town, they don't want to plow town roads, but to do a run there is really easy.
Correct, correct.
We could do it for a parking lot type of issue.
Sure.
We also have a backup in the fellow who's maintenance down at COA that if our maintenance guy doesn't, can't get to the snow blowing down there, we've already informed him that he will go up and use the snow blower up there to take care of the library.
Okay, so, just want to make sure that we get the schedule, the work schedule to Dan. You know, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things where you're in the pounding snow and you get over there and 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, you open up the parking lot, but when snow's blowing that hot, an hour later, you've got two or three inches of snow on the ground, you can't just sit there and chase the parking lot. So, you know, you try to figure that out. I think sometimes in heavy snowfall, you just, for as far as the library goes, you have to shut it down for the day, you shut it down for the day, but.
Yeah, public safety is what it is.
We do our best to do what we can to get potty ways in town hall open and council on aging and we'll, we'll try to figure it out between now and whenever we get snow. So 35, 37 James Street gentlemen, it's just an order rescinding privilege fee assessment and authorization to release a lien. Not going to go through it all, whereas and all that stuff, but the basically, one of them is, is as a result of the town inadvertently assessing privilege fees for two additional sewer loop units on 35 James Street and 37 James Street. The original parcel after being subdivided now contained the total of two sewer units, but was being assessed for three sewer units, one sewer betterment and two privilege fees. So basically, what happened there is when the original betterment was done on Pembroke Street, the lot in the back of a certain address that was on Pembroke Street was assigned to betterment for off of, because it was one buildable lot. The town then changed its zoning to 10,000 square foot lots, which made that one lot be two lots. We just did a privilege fee not too long ago and assigned two of them only because when the attorney looked it up inside the betterment thing, it shows it as Pembroke, not James Street. That's where the mistake was made. Then it was forwarded to us for approval to capture that betterment. When one of those betterments come to find out from James Street was already allocated to the original betterment. So you can't, you can't whack that one parcel of land twice. So it's basically an order to rescind that one privilege fee in the amount of $14,011.57. Is there a motion to approve the rescindment of that privilege fee assessment?
So moved. Second.
As presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does that satisfy Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, town administrators report?
As I said, I'm meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. We're going to go over some of the issues in the, concerning the school. One of the issues is the elementary school and the ventilation issues up there.
And we know that there's a meeting tonight at the schools, correct?
Yeah. And I'll also bring this issue up and I'm going to bring up the issue of the CATV equipment at the school.
Okay, very good.
And other than that, it's, we are starting on revenue projections. Mr. Monticello and myself, and we've been involved, as you know, with some of the negotiations and town council has requested at the next meeting to have an executive session.
That's the fifth. All we have for the fifth, yeah. Have we talked to council on what time they're available for that meeting? So we don't get caught up in what we did this time around. You know, we're here at 4:30, he can't be here until 6:30, 7 o'clock.
I told him.
Oh, yeah, he told us that he's...
He'll be here for the duration.
Yeah, 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 so we go ahead, all right.
And then the, the board is scheduling a special meeting on Friday.
11 a.m.?
For the appointment of the new treasure collector.
Okay. So other than Friday at 11, our next meeting is December 5th. 4:30, good? 4:30, good, dude?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting will be December 5th, 4:30 p.m. Make sure that we have the letters on 7 Elean Street with what we're doing to satisfy those folks that were here tonight.
Or we'll have an action from the building commissioner.
As, as the board voted last time, we want a report from conservation, wiring, building, border health.
Would it be necessary?
Garbage, garbage thrown out on the street.
Would it be necessary if an order is issued from the building commissioner that covers all of that?
Whatever needs to be done. Yep, I mean, you can't have an unsafe parcel of property in town.
Or unpermitted.
That too. Okay, selectmen's announcements? Come on, you have something.
Hi.
Yeah, you do?
I was going to kick out this...
You were, you were talking in the room about your little charging stations. You want to give an update?
No, I already did that.
Oh, you already did that last time? All right.
You reminded me last time.
I apologize, I know, there's, there's a lot going on.
There is.
I'm just trying to balance in the lot right now and trying to keep things on track and sometimes it just gets a little crazy.
Yeah, it's, um, so, I just wanted to let the general public know and you gentlemen, there's been much discussion and talk in the community about status of police contracts and obviously I can't go into detail here, but just so the general public knows, both parties mutually agreed to go into a third-party mediator situation, which unfortunately takes time. That said, I've maintained an open dialogue with the police union. I was hoping to provide the board more detail this evening, but I would ask that next week, the next meeting, we have an executive session so I can provide with you all of the details of where things stand. So, that said, I want to commend the police unit for maintaining that open dialogue during this process.
Absolutely. Okay, very good. Nothing else?
Motion adjourned.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reannoyed adjourned.